Good morning, Rockdale County. Today is...
Good morning.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, February 25th. It's now 10:00 a.m. I hope that you've had a moment to see the yellow cards that are in the lobby. If you would like to speak today during public comments, just make sure to fill one of these out. There are several speakers today, so if during that time you'd like to get one and hand it in, we'd be glad to still add you to the list. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order, and we're going to start today with our invocation and pledge of allegiance from Mark Barber, who's the pastor at New Covenant Fellowship Church. Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
Absolutely.
Before we pray, can we give God a good handout of praise for this spring light bell? And also before we pray, at one time, I was a congressional intern in Washington for a congressman named Lamar Gutter from the mountains of North Carolina. And then Lamar's office, he had this massive plaque that someone in the Appalachian Mountains had carved out for him, and it said, "Public servants. We are the willing, led by the all-knowing, doing the impossible for the ever-ohed, so ungrateful. We've done so much with some of them for so long, we can now do anything and everything with nothing." And so, as we pray, I do appreciate our elected officials.
Thank you.
In the age of the great Google, it's sad that people go online and they get a smidgen of the truth and exaggerate it into truth. So I pray for y'all. Our church prays for you regularly. So as we pray, Father God, we lift up these public servants. We ask that you give them keen proficiency and acuity and consistency in their efficiency to do the business of this county. Let them be their best, give their best, and do their best as they always attempt to do. And we're also thankful, even now, for our public servants who serve this county, for our police officers, for our high sheriff, for the deputy sheriff, and all those who try to manage the everyday affairs and life of Rockdale County. We also pause and pray for our commission chair and the loss of her dear mother recently, a wonderful matriarch who touched so many lives in this county, continue to watch over her, comfort her as only you can. And so, let us not take our freedoms and liberties for granted. We are very humbled to live in the greatest republic ever created on the globe, so give to us that which we cannot give to ourselves, a divine providential sovereign authoritative insight to do what is right and befit the side of our living God. We pray together by saying together, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. I appreciate you today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the faithful with liberty and justice
Madam Clerk, do we have any recognitions or presentations today?
We do not.
Okay, very good. At this time, we will move, in a spirit of peace, into public comment. So today, we have several speakers that will be speaking first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, my condolences to you.
Thank you.
And I hope you get peace. It's the greatest hurt you'll ever experience, but God is always in control.
Thank you.
And I sincerely mean that because you're going to think I'm mad at you in my next comment.
I did say move in a spirit of peace today, so we'll do our best.
If I were a citizen, just a regular citizen, which I am of this county, and I took money from somebody for a product or a service, and I did not receive that, did not deliver, I, as John Q. Public, would be labeled a thief. If I promised to do something, and the people trusted me to do that, that I told it to as a regular person, and I didn't do it, and I didn't make an effort to get it done that was visible, somebody would then label me a liar. I think you ladies are none of those two, but I do think that you're not really thinking There was some money to be removed from the Boys and Girls Club. Now, with two agendas, we now know all of that money isn't going to be gone, and we thank you for considering that, because the Boys and Girls Club represent our youth, the most vulnerable in this community. We cannot use their uplift funds to fund something that we don't even know what it is. So I thank you for that. However, with all the monies that's going to contingency, I'm going to ask you, if during your comment time, would you take a moment and explain to us exactly what the contingency fund is and what it does? Because then we'll know how to support you in your decisions, but if we don't know what you're doing, we can't support what you're doing. Now, in all that movement of money, I found that you were able to move $100,000 to Georgia's strategy. You weren't able to find $100,000 to put in Mountain Valley for a sinking house of 50-some people, but you found $100,000, move over here to this strategy group for marketing. You've got staff people that do that already. All you've got to do is ask them, "You hire the best." I know you do. But you asked that that contract be renewable every year automatically. That means that it may not be evaluated. It's just going to be renewed. And then there's some documentation that says maybe some of you have to recuse yourself and won't be able to vote. How are you going to do it? I ask you again, how do you define mess? The mess you said you clean up? We don't need you to do stuff to us. We need you to do stuff for us. We ask you to get to the part about how you serve the people. And please tell me, what is a contingency fund, and why do you have to take all the money and put in it? And again, my thanks for not touching our babies.
Thank you. All right. Next, David Jernigan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my name is David Jernigan. I have the privilege of serving as the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Atlanta. We oversee our 26 clubs across our 10-county footprint. I also want to start in the spirit of gratitude and thank you all as public servants for the hard work and the tough decisions you have to make on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I also want to start with gratitude that you all have in good faith, really tried to get to a solution in this conversation around our contract. I know this was a series of conversations and some tough decisions you are making from a fiscal perspective, and I really do appreciate the effort that went into that. I also appreciate your understanding what's at stake. And when I say what's at stake, if you had asked me a few years ago what's at stake before I joined the Boys and Girls Clubs, as an educator who used to send my kids down the street to the club, I would have said, "Ah, maybe some kids won't get an afternoon snack, or maybe they won't get some homework help." Now that I sit in this seat, I have a much greater appreciation for what's actually at stake. And what I will tell you is, every day that goes by, I meet a young person, or in many cases, an adult, who will say the phrase to me, a phrase that I used to be very uncomfortable with, "The club saved my life." And when I start asking people, "What does that mean as this club that serves young people from 6 to 18 years old?" What many of them will say is that the club is the place that was my second home. It was the place away from home when my parents couldn't be there. It was the place that sparked my intellectual curiosity. It was the place that exposed me to the passion for the arts. It was the place where I learned that I could be an athlete. It was the space where I gained my leadership skills, the first time I went away to an overnight camp in the great outdoors, the first time I went on a college tour. It helped me get a college scholarship. It is the place where I found mentorship. I could go on and on, as I've heard so many stories over the years of young people that have been deeply impacted by the Boys and Girls Club here in Rockdale County. And so, why is that at stake? As we are challenged as an organization, looking at our 26 clubs across our 10-county footprint, what we know is that it takes the financial support of our local communities to keep our club doors open. With the philanthropy that is on a decline nationally, companies that are grappling with the inflationary environment that we're in and not sure how to invest their resources in ever-shifting federal landscape, we are calling on local communities to invest in their clubs. And I will tell you where we have not seen that. Unfortunately, we've had to close the doors of clubs. We just recently announced the closure of our Douglas County Club for exactly this reason, because we didn't have local support from the local community. I was heartened by the steps that this community has taken to invest in this club and that you all see this as an investment, an investment in your future and the future youth and future leaders of your community. So I thank you today, and I want you to understand that the local board that supports this club is grateful for this support, and they are taking it upon themselves and challenging themselves to go find a match for every dollar you invest in this club, finding a match with the local community. They are well on their way. They've already gotten $15,000 identified towards the $100,000 goal, and under the leadership of Darryl Hall, I know they're going to make that goal. And so, thank you again for your partnership.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Madam Commissioners. What I'm going to talk about today is money, our taxpayer money. First, I'm very concerned, and I've heard from many citizens, that they are unhappy that we have two part-time commissioners who have full-time assistants while our chair and our COO share an assistant. Your assistants, I understand that you're making, the commissioners make less than $40,000 a year while your assistants are making $80,000. Nowhere in corporate America or in government does this happen, and we're asking that you strongly consider that fact. It is a fact. I ask what constituent services liaisons do anyway, because I don't hear from them, we don't see them in the community. And I was told that they assist with your events and answer emails. Well, I know Commissioner Smith, you're new, but Commissioner Williams, I've sent emails to your office and never got a response, not from you or your constituent services liaison. So not only am I questioning what do they do all day for eight hours, but a lot of citizens are asking the same thing. It just doesn't make any sense. I strongly consider that you make your assistants part-time, and also look at the demographics of Rockdale County and choose projects that benefit the majority of the citizens, not just a few, on parks and substance abusers and those with mental health issues. I've worked in mental health. I'm a nurse practitioner. I've worked at Viewpoint Health. This is, you know, near and dear to my heart as well, but this is just a small subset of our community, and we need you to serve the entire community, at least more than that small subset. Times are hard. Prices are going up. Price of eggs, a dozen eggs, is almost $7. We're about to face tariffs. Everybody is tightening their budget, and we expect that the Board of Commissioners will do the same. We're struggling, and we need you to help us. The other thing is that I'm very concerned and have heard from many citizens about what's on the agenda today in terms of considering a contract for Mr. George Diaz and his Georgia Strategy Group. I've known George forever, and this is not personal at all. This is, again, about the money. I understand that there's a consideration for, to give him an open-ended $100,000 contract per year when we have a capable public relations department, especially when he served as the campaign manager for all three of you, and I think that, well, at least two, thank you for correcting, for two of the three of you, and that constitutes a conflict of interest. And everybody is seeing it. Everybody knows it. Everybody sees it. So I just want to bring that to your attention. This is a slap in the face, and we ask you to please cut your budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My condolences to the loss of your mother.
Thank you.
Another feeling, and prayers with you. I think what we're hearing from a lot of the community, I guess I can say word on the street, is that there's not enough transparency. People are not hearing enough. It's too quiet. And then they get a list of 43 items on the agenda, and they say, "Well, how'd I miss all that?" So I think that there needs to be a little more transparency and everything, and the things that they're concerned about are things that we've been fighting about forever. You know, I've been here many times on this podium, and I've been talking about the same thing, about the moratorium on housing. That has to happen. That has to happen. The community wants that, and they've been saying that for a long time, and they don't want to wait. They don't want to wait. You can't wait to put ordinances in place to do a moratorium. As a matter of fact, that's backwards. You should do the moratorium so you can do the ordinances. And talking to other surrounding counties, and that's what they are doing. And that hasn't stopped, because what happens is that developers come flying from everywhere, and they start putting in applications, and then they're in. They're in. And then we up here as a community, lines outside the door and everything, because we're fighting all over again, and we shouldn't have to fight, because that's what you all are here for, to fight for us. So I think the moratorium is one of the first steps. The second thing is that the things that are being removed, I just listened to two people talk about the Boys and Girls Clubs. That's an interest in the county. What are we doing with our children? You know, the parks are wrecked. The parks, that may not seem like a lot for some, I know the parks are wrecked, budget is getting cut. We have to embrace the kids and have something for them to do, or else they're going to be out here doing nothing, or we're getting into trouble, and then that young lady over there is going to be arresting them. So we have to make sure we pay close attention to that. I know a lot of us, even myself, my kids are grown. My grandchild is grown, and I still have to embrace the kids and what happens with the kids, just like when people come down here and fuss about the taxes. I'm 100% disabled vet, so it doesn't affect me the same, but it does affect me, because these are my neighbors, and what affects one of us affects all of us. So I come down here not just thinking of myself, because I could stay home and say, you know, "I don't have no kids in school, and I don't have to pay the same amount of taxes on my house," and everything like that, but I come down here for the people. And last thing is that the planning and zoning. I think, I asked before about planning and zoning, about having five members on the board, and now they're separated. And not five members on the board, but I asked before about them not being separated from city to county. That shouldn't be. That shouldn't be. It should be still five members, and I think if anything, you want to save time, then put it on different days, city one day, county another day. But to separate them, it's going to cost us more, because you're going to have to get three more people. That costs us more, but it's going to take more time. You have to get two more people in the city, two more people in the county, because you're going to have to have five. So that's what I have to say, is a lot more to say, but I can't go through all 43 of these things, and I'm here to listen, and whatever I don't like, I would back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Hi.
Members. I just want to speak on the positive effect that the Boys and Girls Club has had. I'm a grandparent with four grandsons. Three are grown, and I'm raising the fourth one, and it has been monumental and made a big change in all of their lives, and I think it's a good decision to fund them with the grants, and thank you for your time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nichelle Walcott. I'm a single mother of six adopted children. When I drove to Georgia, I drove here with a broken caravan and some groceries from the pantry. Today, I stand before you as a business owner looking to even open a business in Conyers that will supply jobs. However, when I came here five years ago, without the Boys and Girls Club, I wouldn't have been able to become the woman I've become in the community today. The Boys and Girls Club supplied me with excellent childcare. Again, adopting five children with extenuating circumstances, the well-rounded staff there was able to meet my needs. For example, with my kids being adopted, they don't have a lot of family or cousins, so without the Boys and Girls Club, they would not even have birthday parties. Who was coming to their parties? They built a sense of family and community here. I am devastated that I even have to stand here and ask you to keep the Boys and Girls Club open. We all are clear that after-school is when children get in trouble. So for single parents like me, where would my children go? Should they be home with the key around their neck? Should they wander the streets and end up in a gang? Should they just be in trouble and feel unloved after school? So I don't know if you realize, as a single mom, I've worked three jobs all of this entire time. I don't get welfare, DFACS, whatever you want to call it here. If I don't put my feet to the ground and get up and work hard every day, me and my children wouldn't have anything. Again, the Boys and Girls Club. Without the Boys and Girls Club, how would I have been able to drive Lyft when I got here, work in a restaurant within the same day, and clean someone's house in the same day without the Boys and Girls Club? I didn't have to go to Conyers, DFACS, and have spring money, because I had childcare. So again, I'm devastated that this is even on the table. How do we fail our children? There must be other places that money could be cut from, but never the children. Children are people who cannot take care of themselves. Children need to be maintained at the highest level, because we know well-maintained children will become great citizens for America, productive citizens who don't break into people's houses because they've learned how to do things, productive citizens who could come back and read to children and volunteer within our community, productive citizens who know not to litter in the community, because there's well-meaning people around that teach them things. And as we all know, I'm sure, maybe I'm guessing, but I would think that most of you up there are mothers, we know that it takes a village. So the Conyers Police Department gave me free Christmas presents. The Boys and Girls Club gave me free Christmas presents. I didn't have Christmas presents for my children. To date, as a business owner, I do have worked that hard and saved every single penny and cooked every single day at home and not ate out until I was able to get a home and things for me and my children. Without the Boys and Girls Club, that wouldn't have happened. That would not have happened. You must know, you must go back to your offices. You must know. Let everyone in the community know. If anything is to shut down the Conyers, it definitely can't be the Boys and Girls Club, with their single parents or low-income parents without productive childcare.
And next, we have Ms. Holbrook.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am going to piggyback off my sister Nichelle Walcott. I am Alfreda Holbrook. I am the aunt of all of my great nephews, Najahim, Kwameer, Zion, and Mello, and we have a newborn daughter. This is ours as of today. She is finally has been adopted. She's two years old. So I stand here to advocate for the Boys and Girls Club. As I watch and witness all the great values that they add unto my nephews, it would be a disvalue to take that away from them. They wake up when there's no school. They are adamant about, "We have to go to the Boys and Girls Club." It's not about fun. It's about diversity. It's about learning. They give them life skills. They give them life. They want to go there. They're productive. The staff members are very productive. They have a warm, inviting spirit with my nephews, and I'm sure with all the other children. We stand here to advocate for the Boys and Girls Club. We want you guys to know that. It's because of women like us who get up every single day and work hard for the mark to make our children productive. How do we go to work and we don't have proper care for our children? And how do we feel like, it breaks my heart, how do we feel as if we can go to work and don't worry about our children? The thing is that we need to know that we can depend on the Boys and Girls Club. Without them, like my sister indicated, it's the streets that's going to grab them, and we don't want that. We're all productive individuals here. We have our college degrees. We're living a life that we should be living. We own homes. We want our children to do better than us. We don't want to have to go back and grab them multiple times and say, "This isn't correct," when we have the opportunity and the resources to help them, to keep them aligned with society. We want them to be productive individuals. Please, 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 please. I'm a single mother of a 26-year-old. Thank God he has made it. However, we have more children that we need to grab by the belts and keep them in line, and without the Boys and Girls Club and the tutelage under our belts, it's going to be impossible. Please reconsider what you have online. Don't choose the Boys and Girls Club.
Just to clarify, I think you meant, "Don't cut the Boys and Girls Club."
No, cut them.
Correct. Okay. Just wanted to clarify. We have Abi Gayden.
Hello. Good morning.
How are you all doing?
We also, I'm coming here today to talk about spending, because the citizens are looking for relief and depending on you all to bring that relief. Over the last few, the first few meetings, there was over $1 million spent and very little money cut or saved. One of the things that we're cutting is like, or thinking about cutting is the Boys and Girls, $25,000, I believe, or all of it. Right? Is it all of it? The 125,000?
The county's already paid some towards that, yes.
Okay. And so, as the population has grown, there's going to be a greater need for these services. If they were struggling to provide for those children before we grew this county, they're definitely going to be struggling to take care of those children now, and going to need more funding in order to do it. We've spent money, what I've seen in the agenda is money on requisitions. I've seen matches for grant for mental health, for courts, for the juvenile court system. That's for children, you know? But these are children at the Boys and Girls Clubs that have not been incarcerated. These are kids that we're trying to prevent from being incarcerated. We definitely need to be putting more money towards that. Thank you.
Next, we have Les Wright. Okay, we have Tammy Schaller. Oh.
Lee.
Oh, Lee, stop. Sorry. My apologies.
I'll go after her.
Okay.
She's all the way through.
No, it's you, Lee.
Sorry, I'm in a hurry.
No, that's okay.
I'm in a hurry.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, members. I'd like to thank the Commissioners, Commissioner and Chairman, for response to my emails that I send you. I haven't gotten one back from you, which is probably the norm, okay? But thank you for not responding anyway. All right. The Planning Commission. I'd normally attend some of their meetings, and the thought with the Planning Commission is, whatever they don't approve, it gets approved at the BOC. That was their thought last year. In fact, their chairman made that comment. He said, "Whatever we turn down, it's going to get approved at the BOC." And that's not a good thought, but that was their mind frame back in 2024, okay? And you were part of that group. Last year, and it had to have happened last year, there was a liquor store approved on Old Salem Road, which is Old Salem Road, which is not part of this board existing. But thank you for that, which we did not need another liquor store in Rockdale County. But there's one going up now where the Hank and Jerry's used to be. Now, there's a liquor store and a daycare right across the street. I don't understand this. Sometimes we get our priorities mixed up. Because I drove by that store this morning, Salem Liquor Store, right there on the corner. I said, "I don't understand it." But that's the street I live on, Old Salem Road. I live in a Gardens of Philstone neighborhood, by the way. All right. When I go to the meetings, it seems like these developers come in with the property owners, and their mind thought is, "If I can't put homes there, how about a service station?" We've got a service station on this corner, a service station on that corner, a service station on the next corner, but we need another one. We need, what does the mind think about, why do we need so many service stations? And people complain there's one right down the street from me, but we're going to put another one up. I don't understand it. This has got to get better. And one thing too, and you mentioned this, Commissioner Washington-Williams, it's the last BOC meeting, and the public told you in 2024, if you approve this project going across the street, we'd be out of money. And you made the comment that the county cannot get any more money now. They can't get another loan. We're maxed out. The public told you this, but you didn't listen. You snuck behind us, created a PFA. Now, the county can't get a loan to do anything. That's not right. I'm glad we have a new board, and I would say, in the probably a previous upcoming election, there'll probably be some more changes. All right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tammy Schaller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, I was tardy. I'm going to make some general statements, and then there's two areas I want to be specific about that are happening in our community. The first one is during this last election, there was a lot of talk about overspending, how our budget was inflated. And just recently retiring from corporate America, I can tell you our largest expense, 48% of my budget was salaries, benefits. So, when we come to you and ask you to cut the budget, we have to expect that those cuts, a lot of them are going to come from staffing. That's your highest expense. And then you have to start looking at unnecessary expenditures. We have a must-have and a want. You've got to keep the must-haves, and you've got to start chiseling away from the wants. And I can tell you that because we just got a letter from our mortgage company. My house payment just went up $400 a month. So, the budget that I did last year, I had to adjust this year, and I had to look at, "Well, I've got to keep my lights on, but I don't have to do this." We're asking you to do that, but then we criticize you when you do that. So, I'm going to apologize for that. I understand. And I think the citizens need to understand that also. You can't cut the budget without cutting funding from either staffing or from benefits or from programs. Your second biggest expense is your fleet, or it was for us at our company. So, you'll have to start looking at that, and hopefully you're looking at the fleet, how we can reduce that because that is a benefit for the employees who don't have to have a vehicle, don't pay property, don't take taxes on it, benefits, no fuel, no overhead for repairs and things like that. All that's on the county. And the last thing is I want to talk about the separation of the Planning Commission. I think that's one of the worst things that is happening to this county. We're operating still in silos. We can't do that. We're the second smallest county in the state of Georgia. We should have one Planning Commission. If they want to limit the number of hearings they have, that's the way we should go. I've been to meetings that lasted 11 o'clock or midnight, and I was exhausted when I went home. But those are not the norm. Those happen maybe three times, and a lot of it had to do with amendments to the UDO. So, that made the meetings go longer. So, maybe we could split them and have the amendments at one meeting and then go and have the hearing for the rezoning and things like that. I think we have to stop operating in silos. The Board of Education, the city, and the county, we need to work together. The number of gas stations in the city affects the number of gas stations in the county. And I know the same thing for liquor stores. The city is now limiting their liquor stores to 5,000 per population. So, if we can come together and work together, I think we could get a better feeling for what we want in our community and what we want to limit, and maybe it should be based on population. The last thing is, let's see, I'm just going to say, "Let's stop operating in silos." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all of the comments. Now, we will go through the approval of the agenda.
So, I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Without any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for February 11th and February 18th of 2025.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll move into unfinished business. Madam Clerk?
All right. Item 2025-36 is with Roots of Life LLC, Michael D. Brown. This is to rescind contract 2024-214. The contract was approved on December 10th, 2024 to the Extension Services. This is, again, rescinding of the contract and a budget reduction of $40,000 and to transfer to the General Fund Contingency.
I move to approve rescinding this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? Director Sanders, can you explain how we are addressing the garden and how the design and planning will be handled now?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, we had received a grant from the USDA in the amount of $145,000 last year, and $60,000 of that is for the actual plants and educational materials, whereas $85,000 is for contractors that will plant, establish the beds, do the trails and the wellness areas. So, we had previously had an architect onboard, Planners and Engineers Collaborative, that did a draft master plan for the actual layout of the garden, working with Cooperative Extension and the Master Gardeners. We will continue on that path. We have a requisition. They have not completed their work. I did meet with members of UGA on Friday, the interim County Extension Director, Dr. Bledsoe, as well as Julyn Macy, who is the Program Development Coordinator, the District Supervisor, Clinton McCray, and Brittany Teetz and Mary Beth did join the call and the meeting for the discussion. They're excited about it. They have no concerns about meeting the grant deadline to spend this by next year, and we look forward to meeting with them and Director Hammer next week as we progress towards the concept. So, we will, the county, General Services will be responsible for actually the build-out of the garden, and then UGA will take over running it with the Master Gardeners. And there's also a position that will be put in place after, and they have asked us to hold the posting of that position so that it can hire it. Dr. Bledsoe and Julyn Macy, who previously worked with Rockdale County as well, will be heading up their support on this project as we move on to the final design. So, as soon as we have shown them that master plan and they have done whatever tweaks they would like to see to it, and we have one, we'll work towards bidding that out and getting the project constructed.
And do you have a timeframe?
So, it all has to be done by May of next year. So, right now, we're going to meet with UGA next week. Director Hammer and myself will meet with the representatives, and we'll actually sit down with that concept plan and go over it. That was, they were not involved at that time, so I know there's some designs that they did want to take another look at. But it will proceed, and it will be in the area that we had originally talked about where the Master Gardeners, basically, it'll be kind of a redesign of what is out there and enhancement of that as well.
Very good. At this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Okay. Item 48 is the corresponding budget amendment in the amount of $40,000 to move the money from extension to the General Fund Contingency.
Do you have a motion?
I can do that. I move to approve this budget amendment as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Item 44 and 45 go together, so I will read the headings for both of those, and we will go from there. So, item 44 is future land use case 2024-08. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at 4250 Southeast Highway 20 from the medium-density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading. Item 45 is the rezoning case that goes along with it, which is case 2024-27. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 4250 Southeast Highway 20 from AR Agricultural Residential to C2 General Commercial to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend approval with conditions of the rezoning at 4250 Highway 20 from AR Agricultural to C1 Local Commercial, and this is submitted for a second reading.
So, do we take both of these together?
You can take these together if the board wishes to, yes.
Okay. I move to approve the second reading and to adopt the ordinance as presented and to rezone from AR to C1.
Okay. Is there a second?
I vote to deny it, so I don't know how you want me to say that.
Okay, so, if there's not a second, then that motion fails. You'll second it? Okay, so the chair seconds.
Which one did you second?
So, the motion was to approve from AR to C1, correct?
Yes.
With the, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me rescind that, please.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor right now is to approve from AR to C1. Do we have a second for that?
So, without a second, the motion dies.
Okay, so that motion dies.
Right.
Yes.
Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I motion that we deny that.
Okay.
This ordinance.
And I'll second that motion. So, we have a motion and a second to deny the ordinance as presented. Are there any further questions? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries.
All right. There are no items on the, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Did you have a question?
That covers items 44 and 45.
Yes, it does. Okay. There are no items on the consent agenda, so if it pleases the board, we'll move to the items on the regular agenda. Item 2025-50 is with the Boys and Girls Club of Rockdale County through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is for professional services for mentoring youth in the community. This would be change order number one to contract 2024-207. This is a reduction of the current contract amount approved, $125,000 annually, to an amount of $100,000 annually. The term would be January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025, and this is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? I do want to make a couple of statements about this item. So, I know this item was previous to this administration, and I will say that I'm very supportive and passionate about children in our community. Our current ordinance states that we do not fund nonprofits, except the one that's mandated by state law, which is the Community Resource Network, or actually...
The CREZI. Is that what you're talking about?
CREZI, and then also Michael Hutchinson's group.
That's correct.
So, those are the two, the coalition. Thank you. So, I have great concerns about a pattern that could start, and I know that I've heard from a number of other agencies in the community that wish that they had had an opportunity to speak. Some represent children's programs, some represent other nonprofits like Prevent Child Abuse Rockdale, and a number of other organizations that really need support. My goal long-term would be able to, as a county, support programs through training, fundraising, expertise, and those kind of things. But we had $17 million in ARPA money that could have been used possibly for things that would support our community, but it wasn't. So, for me, it's a very hard challenge to say, "I want to help our Boys and Girls Club," yet there's all these other people. There was no open format for applying. I'm not even sure that we have a financial statement. It just, it's unfortunate because I love the work that you do in Boys and Girls Club personally. I just really struggle with the precedent that was set by the last board in this measure. So, thank you.
I have a comment as well. I definitely share your sentiments in reference to this being very difficult, and you guys are in a terrible position, and it puts us in one as well. It is a resolution that we have not to fund, but I do understand that you will provide a service, and it will be a contracted service, so that kind of is different from the resolution that says we won't just give you, give nonprofits funds. So, we can, that was creatively done to circumvent the policy that was already here. So, we are here, and we definitely expect to see, I know the citizens do, you know, return on their investment for this time. I understand and I appreciate everyone that came out in reference to supporting the Boys and Girls Club, and I can relate. You know, it's kind of easy to say no or maybe not if you really can't relate, but I can relate to the struggles that parents go through, single parents, married people, not necessarily just single, but you know, everybody, we're all feeling the pinch right now. So, I do want to say that it is definitely a struggle to make this decision, and I'm looking for great things, greater things to, you know, make your mark and prove your point that this was a great investment for Rockdale County.
And I would like to point out also that the original contract was for $125,000 annually for two years. We changed the contract after a lot of talking and negotiations to it's a one-year contract for $100,000. And so, it will come up again, but we have had conversations about the fact that community support, business support is also necessary to inputting into the Boys and Girls Club.
And can you tell me how much we've already paid to the Boys and Girls Club?
We paid one quarterly payment. Let me see if I have that amount. $31,250.
And then what we'll pay the rest of the year will just add up to $100,000 instead of the original 125. So, those next payments will be reduced.
Right. Okay, so you have a motion and a second vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Thank you. And thank you for your speakers today. I wish you all the best, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready, Madam Clerk?
Okay, all right. So, item 2025-51 is a budget amendment in the amount of $93,750. It is my understanding that we need to remove this item from the agenda. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, if we could get a motion just to remove that item from the agenda.
All right. I make a motion to remove this item from the agenda.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Item 2025-52 is with Paula Boyd through the Superior Court, Adult Resource Court, peer specialists providing peer support services for the Accountability Courts program. This is change order number one to contract 2022. duties until a replacement can be found. It's twenty-five dollars per hour for these temporary additional duties, and the grant goes through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This is grant-funded and a budgeted item.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Item fifty-three is with DCR Media and Systems through the General Services Department for on-demand supply and installation of audio and video equipment. This is for one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. This is multi-funded and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I do- I would like to know where the locations are for those systems, if you could clarify for me. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This- they don't have any specific locations, so this is an on-call services. So, one way that we will use these is in the new courthouse facility, but all of the courtrooms themselves have audiovisual systems, and then every time we have a meeting room or conference room, either that's reused or renovated, we have a need to do audiovisual services. So, this is what this is, sort of on-call services.
So, can you explain why it's on-call versus a defined, I guess, number of places it would be located?
Well, so over the past couple of years, probably, I guess eighteen that I've been here, we have- we have different services that we always end up providing. For instance, a few years ago, the Board of Commissioners had an audio system, if you remember, went out. I know Commissioner Williams should remember that, and we had to fix that, and we had to put that out to a public bid just for something for a small little item, such as coming in and repairing, or providing an additional amplifier, or something like that for- or a TV, or a hookup, or HDMI cables, things like that. Anything that crests over a certain threshold, we would have to bid out. So, what we did in this one, just like we have small contractors that do framing, electrical work, we have HVAC under contract, we bid those out every so many years, so we put those out to a public bid. Contractors, small contractors, local ones have a chance to bid on things, and then they have those on-call services. So, when something comes up where the HVAC unit, air conditioning unit breaks, we can call them, and they can come and provide that immediately. So, for instance, if for whatever reason the TVs go out, and we need to provide two new TVs, instead of having to take a bid process and have that take weeks or months, we call the on-call contractor, and they comply with the current bid prices that they have in their bid that were publicly bid for those items.
I think I'm confused. I understand the need for on-call. I don't understand why, if it's hardware for the new courthouse, it's not a bid process.
It is a bid process. So, this went out for a public bid. We put out four different packages, and then labor and markup costs. So, there was two different elements to this. We said, here's a bid package for a courtroom setup, a conference room setup with large TV, small TV, and so on, with hardware and labor and materials.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's okay.
Okay, we good?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Item fifty-four is with the Department of Natural Resources through the General Services Department. This is change order number one to contract two thousand twenty-two dash one forty-five for four-month extension through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the Water Conservation Fund grant for the DeCastro Trailhead Nature Center and Pavilion.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item fifty-five is with All Pro Pest Services through the General Services Department for pest control for county facilities. This is on-demand. It's change order number one to contract two thousand twenty-three dash one eighty-eight to add four additional sites at an additional cost of a hundred dollars per month, making it a total of two thousand eighty-nine dollars per month, and twenty-five thousand dollars and sixty-eight- twenty-five thousand sixty-eight dollars per year, previously one thousand ninety-eight- nine hundred ninety-eight dollars per month, and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year. This is one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Okay, and they are doing four additional sites for an additional one hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item fifty-six is with Galls LLC through the Fire Rescue Department for fire uniforms. This is on-demand and one year with option to renew three additional one-year periods. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item fifty-seven is with Hussey Gay Bell and DeYoung Incorporated for consulting engineers. This is through the Transportation Department. It's for concept report for the Sigmund Rose Phase Four widening and multi-use path. It's change order number one to contract two thousand twenty-three dash one sixty to add a pre-qualified right-of-way acquisition specialist required by GDOT. It's an additional five thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. Currently, it's eight hundred eighty-five thousand one hundred ten dollars and thirty-one cents. So, the new total is eight hundred ninety thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. This is for eighteen months. It's SPOS and federally funded. This is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item fifty-eight is with Atlas Technical Consultants through the Transportation Department for the Courtesy Parkway Extension Project Design Services. This is change order number five to contract two thousand seventeen dash thirty-six. It's to add post-design services. It's an additional ninety-one thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. So, currently, that would be four hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the new total is five hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. This is SPOS-funded and a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. I do have a question for Director Kelly, just to clarify. And I'll ask the question as you're on your way. So, can you talk about when and why we use outside consultants for the Department of Transportation? Why don't we do these things internally?
Good morning.
This is for the public's education.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning to you all. So, when we have the specific designs, whether that be environmental, there's several things that go into a overall project when we go through the design phase, whether that be bridge, substructures, depending on what we're dealing with. We have those experts. Those experts may not be in-house, so you have somebody to come in and design those for us, and their expertise in bridge, environmental, we are able to pull those in collectively. There's also the sheer time to design every single project would be astronomical. So, there is some assistance there needed as well. So, whether you're doing Sigmund and then Cursey at the same time, those were still running at the same time.
Right.
In different phases. There's- those projects from preliminary engineering, utilities, right-of-way, through construction, that's five years in itself. So, if you're focusing on one at a time, you're only getting Cursey done. You're not going to do Sigmund at all.
Correct.
So, that lets you have multiples.
And we have three major projects.
That just got kicked off with- and that's not including the ones that are coming right behind it, Sigmund Phase Four, Phase Three. There's others that are coming right behind it. If we wait and stack those one by one, that sequence will put you out pretty far.
Correct. So, primarily for a contract like this with a Courtesy Parkway Extension project, their focused work is on the bridge construction and drawings.
So, for this one specifically, yes, this will allow us to get that approved, and we can order that material.
Okay.
Those lead times on bridges can run twelve to fourteen months, depending on the parts that you need.
Sure.
And there are other bridges around the area that are being done in other counties or other, and you're going to get in line behind them. So, we want to get this out.
All right. Well, thank you. We want to expedite that for sure.
All right.
So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, item fifty-nine is with CPL Architects, Engineers, and Landscape Architect, DPC, Planning and Development. This is the Rockdale County's Planning and Development Unified Development Ordinance Update. The amount is one hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred forty dollars. The term is eighteen months. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I do want to make a statement. I know earlier we heard from a citizen who was concerned about the moratorium for housing. I know that we have been focused on making sure that we make steps towards moratoriums being in place, and we do currently have a hundred and twenty-day moratorium in place for specific more business-related items. The housing moratorium is- we were waiting for this contract to come before us so that we would be able to maximize the amount of time for the moratorium, so it was very, very strategic, and you should see that coming forth very soon. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item sixty is with State Farm Insurance through the Finance Department for subrogation, authorization, release, property damage only for State Farm's client at fault in accident involving the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, Unit Two Thirty-seven, causing damages in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and forty-five cents. This payment is a reimbursement to the county's general fund and will settle all demands related to the accident.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item sixty-one is with State Farm Insurance through the Finance Department for subrogation, authorization, release, property damage only for State Farm's client at fault in accident involving a Rockdale County Sheriff's Unit Five Sixty-three, causing damages in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-one cents. This payment is as a reimbursement to the county's general fund and will settle all demands related to the accident.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item sixty-two is with Lexis Nexus Risk Solution through the Sheriff's Office for Accurate Track System Software for cellphone mapping and crucial day-to-day operations of the investigative team. The amount is seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars per year. It's through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I do- I do have a specific question about this. So, I just heard you read that the contract was through November of two thousand twenty-five, which is not a complete year.
Mm-hmm.
So, can you clarify the timeframe for the contract?
So, it's listed on here as December first, two thousand twenty-four, through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So, that contract wouldn't be appropriate. Director, would you like to speak to that, the timeframe?
So, the term of the contract began December first, two thousand twenty-four. This is when we received the information from the Sheriff's Office to bring it in front. No of the board, no payments have gone out to them on this contract, so this is approval, and the contract will be through November thirtieth.
So, I think we need to change the motion for ratification. Wouldn't that be correct?
We can.
Are they currently in the contract?
Well, because the contract does read, December first, two thousand twenty-four, through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, but I would defer to our county attorney.
Have payments been made?
No payments have been made.
So, I'd like to table this to the next meeting, defer it to the next meeting, because the contract dates don't align.
Okay. If you would like to restate your motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we defer this item to the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you. I haven't. Thank you. All right. Item sixty-three is a requisition through the General Services Department for Southeastern Security Professionals to renew contract two thousand twenty-four dash thirty-one for the two thousand twenty-five alarm monitoring services in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. This is through the general fund and Water Enterprise Fund. This is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Item sixty-four is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance. It's a renewal to contract two thousand twenty-four dash nineteen for the two thousand twenty-five HVAC preventative maintenance services. The amount is one hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and seven dollars. This is through the general fund and Water Enterprise Fund. This is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item sixty-five is a requisition through the General Services Department for Imperial Aid. This is a purchase from Cooperative Contract. It is two thousand twenty-five janitorial supplies in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item sixty-six is a requisition through the General Services Department for ArborServe. This is a renewal to contract two thousand twenty-two dash one fifty-two for the two thousand twenty-five quarterly tree grinding and debris hauling at the recycling center. It's in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item sixty-seven is a requisition through the General Services Department for Pratt Recycling. It's a renewal to contract two thousand twenty-one dash one sixty-eight for two thousand twenty-five bulk waste and trash compactor recycling. It's in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item sixty-eight is a requisition through the General Services Department for American Facility Services. This is renewal to contract two thousand twenty-three dash one seventy-two. It's for two thousand twenty-five janitorial services in the amount of two hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is through the general fund and Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Item sixty- oh, I apologize. Item sixty-nine is a requisition through the General Services Department for Building Maintenance Services. It's a renewal to contract two thousand twenty-three dash one seventy-three for two thousand twenty-five janitorial services in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. So, the new cost is one hundred forty-two thousand four hundred nine dollars and fifty-six cents. The cost increased from two thousand twenty-four by five thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars per year. This is through the general fund and the Water Enterprise Fund and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is also a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy is a requisition through the General Services Department for Yancey Power Systems. This is through the state contract. This is for two thousand twenty-five generator preventative maintenance services. The amount is seventy-two thousand eight hundred eight dollars and six cents. This is for twenty-one generators. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve the requisition as presented.
I second the motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-one is a requisition through Technology Services for TSA Incorporated for budgeted implementation services for rubric software and countywide backup. This is for the NCPA Cooperative Contract. The amount is one hundred fifteen thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. This is through the general fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-two is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for United Maintenance. It's a replacement of- It's a replacement of jail, of the jails' RTUs for the POD and Replacement of Staff RTU Heat Exchanger. The amount is sixty-seven, sixty-seven thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars. This is through the Capital Improvement Fund and is a budgeted item and is also submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? I do have a question, Director Azariah. This is also a ratification from the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning again. This is a ratification from the Sheriff's Department. This was an email that I sent to you for an emergency replacement at the Sheriff's Office for the HVAC, part of the HVAC unit and the RTU Heat Exchanger. It has been done. I did receive approval from the majority of the board, which is why it's here for a ratification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
You had a motion and a second, looking for a vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-three is a requisition through the Rockdale Water Resource Customer Service Department. This is for online utility exchange for contract 2013-46 for the use of online utility exchange for positive IDs. It's in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-four is an expenditure request through Aramark Services through the Sheriff's Office. This is contract 2022-177. This is for the cost of inmate meals for the week of January second, 2025, through January eighth, 2025, and for January sixteenth, 2025, through January twenty-second, 2025. The amount is twenty-seven thousand, two hundred seven dollars and ninety-one cents. This is general, this is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this as expenditure request as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you explain the way this contract was handled and why there were specific weeks?
So I believe what had happened is that they are in the middle of finding new coverage for the meals at the jail, and so they were going week by week while they're having that put out right now.
At the same cost.
Yes, at the same cost. That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
All right. Item seventy-five is an expenditure request through Axon Enterprise through the Sheriff's Office. This is contract 2023-20 for Axon Annual Maintenance Agreement. The amount is four hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure as requested.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I do have a comment and a question, actually. So annual maintenance of what?
The body cameras.
The body cameras. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-six is an expenditure request through GTS for the Tax Commissioner's Office. This is for delinquent notice fees for Technical Services Agreement. This is a payment covering March, 2024, and July, 2024. The amount is twenty-four thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
So we're, we're looking at paying this retroactively? They've already spent this? Why is it just now coming up for?
Madam CFO, when was the invoice submitted?
From Tax Commissioner?
Yes.
Good afternoon again. I can try to answer any questions related to the Finance Department with these items, but sometimes I cannot answer all of them because they're with different departments. This looks like it came through, and let me make sure I'm on the right item, which I am not. Thank you. This was received at the end of January, beginning of February, from the Office of the Tax Commissioner.
Okay. So, okay. So I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Right. Item seventy-seven is Text Amendment Case 2025-01, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions and Section 218-1 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding gasoline stations to the Definit, Definition Section and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you generalize what the goal of this text amendment is?
Yes, I will. So you'll see a series of text amendments submitted for first read this morning. This one is relative to one of the four items that we have under a moratorium right now. This is related to gas stations. And so we are sending this to, through the public hearing process to obtain input and rewrite this section.
And you, can you tell me the goal of the, of the item, the text amendment?
So the goal of this particular text amendment is to get a better handle on gas stations right now. One of the things that we're proposing preliminarily is a larger distance in between gas stations and even limiting the amount of pumps and, and things like that. So we'll have more as it goes through the public hearing process.
Thank you. I know our citizens will be interested.
Yes.
So I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-eight is Text Amendment Case 2025-02, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 218-1, The Table of Permitted Uses, and Section 218-1, The Standard of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding small-box discount retailers to the Definition Section, adding small-box discount retailers to the Table of Permitted Uses, and adding supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you give a brief summary to the public for?
Yes, so this is the same thing. We are adding to the definition of what most would consider dollar stores and discount stores and that kind of thing, trying to limit where they go and get a better handle on this text as well. So.
Very good. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item seventy-nine is Text Amendment Case 2025-03, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 218-1, The Table of Permitted Uses, and Section 218-13, The Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, adding vape stores to the Definition Section, adding vape stores to the Table of Permitted Uses, and adding supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty is a Text Amendment Case 2025-04, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 218-1, The Table of Permitted Uses, Section 218-13, The Standard of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended regarding many storage warehouses and self-storage units, and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-one is Text Amendment Case 2025-05, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 218-1, The Table of Permitted Uses, Section 206-1, the WP Watershed Protection District, and Section 218-13, The Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended regarding short-term rentals, and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-two is Text Amendment Case 2025-06, An Ordinance to Amend the Code of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, so as to amend Section 106 dash, 106.1C, Definition Section 106, Definitions and Abbreviations, Section 218-1, The Table of Permitted Uses, and Section 218-13, Supplemental Regulations, Subpart B, Planning and Development, to provide for, to provide for repeal of conflicting provisions, to provide for an adoption date and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading. This is relative to the Data Center Height Amendments and Supplemental Regulations as it relates just to data centers.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-three is Text Amendment Case 2025-07, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of Section 106-1 Definitions, Section 2-135, and Section 238-3, the Planning Commission, Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, regarding the Planning Commission and amending the supplemental regulations related thereto. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to Planning and Commission, uh, Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-four is Future Land Use Amendment Case 2025-01, An Ordinance to Amend the Future Land Use Map of Rockdale County, Georgia's Comprehensive Plan, as amended for property located at 2200 Frontier Drive Northwest, from the medium-density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-five is Resoning Case 2025-02, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning District Map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended by rezoning 2200 Frontier Drive Northwest, from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Local Commercial. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries.
Item eighty-six is a Future Land Use Case 2025-02, An Ordinance to Amend the Future Land Use Map of Rockdale County, Georgia's Comprehensive Plan, as amended for property located at 2567 Northeast Jeez Mill Road, from the Technology Park Future Land Use category to the Medium Density Residential Future category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Item eighty-seven is Resoning Case 2025-01, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning District Map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, by rezoning 2567 Northeast Jeez Mill Road from AR Agricultural Residential to CRS Collaborative Residential Subdivision. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this first reading and refer this ordinance to Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries.
Item eighty-eight is Resoning Case 2025-03, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning District Map of Rockdale County, Georgia, as amended, by rezoning 1535 and 1565 Northwest Farmer Road from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item eighty-nine is a list of alcoholic beverage licenses for approval.
I move to approve the licenses as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Item ninety is our amendments to the Rockdale County Classification and Pay Plan through the Talent Management Department.
I move to approve these amendments as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. If there's not any questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025-91, Our Budget Amendments. A is a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars moved from the Board of Commissioners to the General Fund Contingency. B is three hundred six thousand dollars moved from the Board of Commissioners to Superior Court Professional Services. C is a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars moved from Parks and Recreation to the General Fund Contingency.
General, uh, general. Director Azariah, could you address the board for a moment and talk about when we make[1642.15] and talk about when we make these movements, how that works and how it affects the different funds?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So there, before you are three amendments. The first amendment is a reduction from the Board of Commissioners, um, personal services, and it is due to the reduction of the chief strategy officer as well as savings by delaying the project manager. So that amount is moved to the contingency fund.
And what does the contingency fund hold?
Okay, so the contingency fund is where we sweep any kind of identified salary savings, but it is also there for any unexpected expenses that might arise, be it from storms or acts of nature to any kind of budget amendments where funding is needed in another area.
Okay, and so for the general public to, to better understand, right now, the way that our staffing pattern works is that we have certain funded positions. Sometimes departments may need additional support or request positions, and those are not funded. So if they were approved, it would come from contingency.
So we do run into the case where if a position is on the org chart but was not funded for the two thousand and twenty-five budget, it would need to be funded from that contingency line if approved by the board.
Right, okay. Very good. Is there anything else, um, that contingency is used for?
That's typically most of the uses.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions on the amendments?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we just need a motion?
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve these budget amendments as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, item ninety-two is with Georgia Strategy Group through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is for professional services for marketing and community relations. The amount is one hundred thousand dollars per year. It's March first, two thousand and twenty-five through February twenty eighth, twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-six. I believe the auto renewal has been removed from this contract.
Okay, thank you.
So I move to approve this contract as presented. And I would, I do have a couple comments about it. Um, you know, we talked a lot about saving funds, and I am not sure if you're aware that, um, Georgia Strategy Group was contacted by the Boys and Girls Club to work with us in that, and Georgia Strategy Group did this at no cost to us. And in this process, we saved twenty-five thousand dollars this year and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings just on this one contract that, um, that the group was not being paid for. And so if they can save us, if you take out that hundred thousand, then it's still a net fifty thousand dollar savings. There'll be ample opportunities to come where those kinds of negotiations will occur that will allow us to save funding and to save money. Sometimes I feel like you have to invest in the best kind of, um, strategy that will work in order to save money. So I move to approve the contract.
Okay, do I have a second?
Um, I would like to add some comments.
Please.
Um, yes, Georgia Strategy Group and George Diaz worked on my campaign. He was paid for a service that was rendered. I do not owe him any favors. I do not owe him a dime anymore money. Um, Georgia Strategy Group not only worked on my campaign but others as well, not only just here, um, with the Board of Commission but throughout our county. He has definitely proven that he is for Rockdale County. Um, yes, it is a very, very, very hard decision, um, for me to make today regarding that because I know people will look at it as being, you know, unethical, unethical decision because of our ties. And, um, for that reason, I am voting to deny this contract.
So, so the motion that was, um, stated does not have a second, so it dies, and I'll look for another, um, motion to be made.
Um, I motion that we, um, deny this contract, but I also would like to give this, um, company an opportunity, and we presented as a bid, an open bid. Um, I know we don't have to because of this dollar amount, but in all fairness and transparency, I would like to give this company an opportunity to bid on services because last week it was a company that was presented, um, to us. So I would like for, um, Georgia Strategy Group and George Diaz to have a fair chance at, um, representing Rockdale County.
Thank you. I'll second that motion with, um, a note that, um, for me, it's very important, and I understand that this contract is one penny short of the bidding process. And I think the previous administration did, um, things that were different from the intent of the ordinance in place, which is not to fund, not to fund nonprofits, not to bid things out. And so I hope to move with a spirit that's different than that and really boast transparency. And I think any good company is going to want to bid and do work with Rockdale County as long as we don't make it too bureaucratic. So I hope that we will continue to look for ways to streamline our procurement process and give companies an opportunity to do business with Rockdale and bring us to an even greater level of service delivery and professionalism in the things that we do.
So are, are we, is the motion that we deny this contract, but that, is there another motion to put this out for bid, or how, how does that work?
So I think the motion on the table is that we deny this contract. However, I did hear a recommendation for a bid process, and I think we could handle that separately, correct?
You could. So right now, you have a motion and a second to deny the contract, and you don't need to formally vote on to put something out for bid or RFQ or RFP. We just need to get the scope together and then put it out. So my recommendation would be to vote on what you have before you right now, and then we can get together with the finance department to make sure that what it is that the board wants is put out to bid or to RFQ, something like that.
Okay, and I, and I would agree with that. I think that would give us time to really assess.
What it is you're looking for.
Being a new administration, we're in February, and we're working very, very fast. Um, I know there's a lot of items today, but we are trying to do the people's business. And so, uh, with that effort, I think it would be helpful for us to have a little bit more time to really assess where we have any gaps of service or delivery, um, concerns and move forward in that way. So with that, we have a motion, um, on the table and a second. So all in favor to deny this contract, say aye.
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 Nay.
Nay. Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Item two thousand and twenty-five ninety-three is the end of appointment for Jason Redman, the director of Parks and Recreation, effective February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this end of appointment as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item two thousand and twenty-five ninety-four is with, um, our policies. This is a request to repeal policy two thousand and twenty-four dash two dash eighteen. This is the current one we have on aircraft and drone policy. It is now in conflict with the state law, so we're requesting that you repeal it.
Thank you.
I move to approve to repeal this policy as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item two thousand and twenty-five dash ninety-five is an ordinance amending the code of Rockdale County, Georgia, providing for the amendment of chapters two and fifty-eight of the code of Rockdale County, Georgia. This would change the name of the talent management department to human resources. And if you would like to, you can, if it's unanimous, you could waive the second reading. Um, so it would be approve the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt the ordinance as presented if you choose to do so today.
So I move to approve the ordinance as presented and waive the second reading.
Right.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. At this time, we have board comment.
Can you please, uh, can you give us a, a resource where we can get some, uh, in-depth clarification on all these articles that are complicated by D A R I S O, can we, uh, can we, uh, be referred to where we can go to get in-depth, uh, information about this one?
Okay, I'll do that in just a minute. Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, one of the things I had on my list was to explain contingency fund, but Director Erosary, your CFO, Erosary did that very well. I did want to address, um, the comment about substance abuse, people with substance abuse, mental health issues, as that being a small subset of our population. We know that at any given time, twenty-five percent of our adult population and the same number of our youth are affected by mental health issues. That's a national statistic. It's, so we're talking about a quarter of our population. Those programs and funding that go through our, um, court system are mostly grants, and if, and they, those grants allow those folks with addictions with, um, that have been through the court system to receive treatment for, um, addictions and mental health issues. We have a drug court, we have a DUI court, we have a family, family treatment court, and we have a resource, mental health resource court. The, um, the success rate of those courts has been phenomenal and with, in terms of recovery and in not returning, um, to those previous behaviors. When that happens, we see families that are becoming reunited again. We see people who become stable. We see people, those, with that stability, those people are able to, um, retain jobs, pay their taxes, contribute to, um, to our, our, uh, to society in a positive way. We know that when one individual changes, it doesn't just affect that person, it affects them, it affects their family, and when families are affected, it affects communities. When you're looking at twenty-five percent of the population, that's a huge amount. And so, um, and like I said, almost all of those funds are grant funded, and we hope they continue from the federal government. The other comment I had is about the planning commission. There's been a lot of comments to us about, we don't want the planning commission to be separate. The county doesn't want it either, but we have no choice. The city has announced that they are pulling out. And so there will be two separate planning commissions. If you have any concerns, it's the city that you would need to talk with because we are in favor of keeping it because of the idea of eliminating silos and working together. So we had no control over that, and, um, the city is the one that, that has made that decision. Okay, so I have board comments today about, um, Black History Month. This is the final Tuesday of this month. So according to the CDC, Georgia is currently experiencing a high level of influenza activity, and with the flu season's ongoing severity, health professionals are strongly encouraging everyone to adhere to essential public health guidelines. And I don't know if you've noticed, but as I go out in public, I see a lot more people wearing masks again, um, especially those who are working with the public. So the recommendations include getting vaccinated, practice frequent hand washing, staying home when ill to help mitigate the spread of the virus. So today, I would like to honor Dr. Rebecca Lee Crumpley, Crumpler, the first African-American woman to earn a medical degree. In eighteen sixty-four, she made history by graduating from the New England Female Medical College in Boston, Massachusetts. A true pioneer, she dedicated much of her career to providing medical care to underserved communities, particularly former enslaved individuals who had limited access to healthcare. Despite the numerous challenges she faced as a black woman in a field dominated by men, Dr. Crumpler's determination and resilience paved the way for future generations of black women in medicine. Her groundbreaking achievements and unwavering commitment to improving public health have left an enduring legacy inspiring countless individuals to continue breaking bears, barriers in the medical profession. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Very nice.
That's good.
Okay, my comment. Um, I wanted to, um, also let everybody know that, um, the city pulled out from us so that we, she already addressed that, so it wasn't our, um, desire to separate from the city. Um, also to speak about experts and consultants, that, when the county uses those people. Um, as Andrew spoke about, you know, while we were contracted with a particular contractor, they are experts in their position, um, and in their field. If we were to hire those experts and put them on our payroll, it would be a problem because people would say, you know, we were overpaying people, or we have a high, um, personnel bound, uh, budget or whatever it is. But I'm, I'm trying to get to the point to let you know that sometimes you have to spend money for a product that you are looking for. It may be, you may have some things at home. Yes, we do have a, um, PR department that is awesome and stellar, and also some of those awards that they won were won with, um, George Diaz. So, um, I just want people to remember that sometimes you have to have experts to help you, even though you have someone that can do the same thing, but not to the same degree. Um, that was a very difficult decision for me today. I just want to be real honest and transparent with everybody because I know the magnitude and I know what, um, Mr. Diaz could bring to Rockdale County. But, um, I had to remember this in my mind. Doing the right thing isn't always easy. In fact, sometimes it's real hard. But just remember that doing the right things is always right. Those are my comments.
That was a really beautiful segue for me. Okay. I also felt conflicted with the meeting today, but, um, uh, confident that, you know, for the reasons stated, I feel confident with, um, the votes that, uh, went before us today. Um, in light of your presentation for Black History Month, I thank you for highlighting her. What a, what a groundbreaking person. I do want to share one of my favorite books. If you've never had the chance to read, The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks. It is fantastic, and you will not regret your time spent in learning more about her incredible life and how her sacrifices have led to groundbreaking medical research even today. So, um, make sure that if you can, The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks. Um, I did also want to make notes about the planning commission. I too would like to see a unified planning commission, um, but, uh, I will always try and make the best of whatever cards are dealt. And so, um, assuming that we will move forward as two separate boards, um, we will be taking, um, applications for those additional seats on the board. And so I hope that people that are committed about the importance of our planning and use map, uh, planning and zoning map, and our ordinances and those type of things will consider, um, volunteering their time to make a significant impact in the future of Rockdale County. So Madam Clerk Rutledge, uh, has those applications. She can send them to you by email or in person. She'll provide those. I did also want to mention that, um, there were a lot of items on the agenda, and I really don't apologize for it because I quite honestly know how much work we have to get done, and these are necessary steps to move forward with the very things that citizens have asked. You want a moratorium? These are just part of the process that has to be done, uh, among all the other contracts. So we will continue to work to streamline things and try and save taxpayers' dollars, dollars. But let me also say that I heard today mixed messages. We want to save money, but we want to spend money, and that puts us in a hard spot because we don't want it to be perceived. Our children are extremely valuable, and I've worked for decades in this community, providing education and support programs and things like that for children here, and that's why I know a lot of the partners in the community. So just understand that, um, it, it makes it challenging for us, and it's hard to pick certain nonprofits but not others, and that's why the ordinance is really in place. There are things that the government can do, whether it's, you know, working collaboratively to market, to support, to share the information about their fundraiser. Um, those things are important, but investing in companies and being just shy of the cutoff for workarounds on contracts is not something that I want to do. So my expectation for bidding things out, for looking at something like that, if we want to change the policy, we're going to have to do things like request financial reporting, see that they've tried to fundraise, see that they're trying to market. Do they just, are they falling short on those critical tools? And how can we, through the Community Resource Network, which is already an established network that nonprofits can attend the first Monday of every single month, and help build and strengthen their organization? We have pieces to the puzzle already in place. We need to connect those so that we can elevate each of those organizations, but I don't want to pick favorites. That's not, that's not my intent. So, um, and then I want to give a shout out this morning to the Board of Governors, uh, for the Board of Governors' meeting at the chamber this morning where Director Brian Kelly, oh, he had to leave. Um, Director Brian Kelly spoke and informed them about the three, three main transportation projects, which are going to be the Salem Road expansion to four lanes, all the way down to Brown Bridge in Nanton County, the Courtesy Parkway, um, I was going to say flyover.
Overpass.
Extend. Overpass, thank you, that's the word. Courtesy Parkway, overpass. And then our new interchange at Highway one thirty-eight. So the historically important dollars that are coming to Rockdale is very, very important for us moving forward to address all of our transportation needs. There's not ever going to be enough money to pave all the roads I'd like to pave in Rockdale, but we're going to do our best in coming up with some new strategies to address those and really try and stay up to par with the growth that we're experiencing, experiencing. And finally, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to the citizens in this community who have done a great job of keeping us informed and staying in the loop. And lastly, one more thing. In my family, we do a neat thing where the day before your birthday, we celebrate your last chapter of the year. So today is the last chapter, chapter fifty-six for me, and I want to say that it's been a great chapter to write, and I am very grateful for everyone in my life. Thank you. All right, do we have a need for executive session?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. With that being said, I need a motion for adjournment.
I motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, all right.